We'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. During the visitors' comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comment section. In addition, there'll be a public comments section after the GM staff reports, but not much longer. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors' comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on the sign up sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that's not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting as always. The public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations towards any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will then determine staff's involvement, and attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please just take it outside of the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. So my name is David Haley, a member-at-large, position number two, and board president. Other members of our board and staff include Jeremy Ash, our general manager, Tom Groneman, second district, Stevie Wakes, senior, first district, Brett Parker, third district, and board secretary, Mary Gonzalez, member-at-large, position number one, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member-at-large, position number three, board vice president, and Angela Lawson, our acting chief counsel. Please remember to put your phones on silent. Please also be aware that microphones are really sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. So before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take it upon myself to read the mission statement. Mission of the BPU is to focus on the needs of our customers, to improve the quality of life in our community while promoting safe, reliable, and sustainable utilities. You would please call the roll?
Roll call, Wakes.
Present.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Groneman?
Here.
Haley?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda of March 5, 2025, are there any comments on the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
Wake second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Um, before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of February 19, 2025, are there any comments? I actually do have a comment. Would like to amend the minutes briefly by stating in his absence on that, if we might amend that. As it reads now, it says that my attendance was by Zoom, at which time I asked that the vice president would conduct the meeting, which she did. But then it says in the absence, in his absence, well, I did attend, I wasn't attended at the meeting only by Zoom. Zoom will be considered attendance of a meeting for every board member. So without, unless there's some objection, I'd request-
What section are you, I'm sorry, what section are you in?
Three minutes. Please, I just had those. Share those. Okay.
I move that we strike in his absence minute.
I see. Okay.
Wake second.
Do you, you can, are you moving to approve with that?
Yes, with, yes.
With that change?
With the, with the small change. Thank you very much, Mr. Ash. It's Paige.
I, I found it.
Okay, good. So it reads, Mr. Haley asked that Ms. Mulvaney Henry conduct the meeting in his absence. Request that we strike the words in his absence, and it's just that Ms. Mulvaney Henry conducts the meeting, period.
That was a motion that I-
Yes, it was, the motion was just to make that change. Did you want to approve it with, make the motion to approve it with that change?
I make the motion to approve the minutes with the change of, with striking in his absence.
Wake second.
Any other comments on the, on the motion? Roll call then, please.
Roll call, Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for the motion for minutes, let me just do the minutes. Regular session, so that's it. We're there. That's good. At this point in time, thank you, we'll go to, um, any visitors' comments that we have. Do we have anyone that's here that's signed in for visitors? Thank you. Sir, any online? No hands raised? No visitors' comments? All right, thank you. At this point in time, we'll turn the meeting over to general manager Jeremy Ash.
Thank you, President Haley. At this time, I think Abby Frye is here and some of her team to give you an update on one of her areas of responsibility and some of the excitement around some change and new initiatives along with that department. So with that, Abby?
Hello and good evening. Thank you for allowing me time to speak to you this evening. My name is Abby Frye, and I'm the chief administrative officer for BPU. Over the past year, I have been learning, observing, but most importantly, listening to how we do business with our customers. And I'm here to share with you that we are transforming the service that we provide our customers.
Excuse me, is your mic on, Abby?
Can you hear me? I just gotta lean in more.
Okay.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Again, my name is Abby Frye, and I oversee customer care, human resources, facility services, communications, and marketing. I have two decades of experience in utilities, over half of which is focused on customer experience. Next slide. Today, I'm going to talk to you about our 2024 accomplishments, where we are today, and what's coming next. So let's begin. Here are some numbers from how we ended 2024. In April, we opened the lobby for in-person appointments, and since then have completed 390 of those. We've seen a significant increase in our paperless billing and continue to promote that. One area of focus for us is the flex pay and promoting this for customers, educating them on benefits for prepay, which allows them more control of their bill. In April, we also launched MyMeter with an add-on for start, stop, and transfer in September. At the end of 2024, we had almost 29,000 users, and that number continues to grow. Next slide. Last summer, I introduced you to the customer service scorecard. We have been tracking stats on our individual agents and a collective roll-up, like you see here. This is our benchmark year. We started 2024 understaffed in the call center and added five new reps in February, introduced MyMeter in April, and the Start Service Portal in September. Those are highlighted here to show potential significant increases, decreases, or impacts to numbers during that time. Overall, we had 172,418 incoming calls. Over 90,000 of those were answered by BPU. We averaged a 15% abandonment rate, and more than 50% of those went into a callback and queue or voicemail. Sorry, more than 50,000 of those went into a callback and queue or voicemail. Our average speed of answer was 297 seconds, or just under five minutes, and our average handle time was 333 seconds, or approximately five and a half minutes per call. This helps us find areas where we're doing well and areas of opportunity. It also shows in August, our numbers were really great, along with June and July. So working with our employees and talking about what are the things that we were or were not doing that help us provide the best service to our customers, so we can recreate that on a regular basis. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. So where are we today? Customer service is changing their name to customer care. I'm excited to announce the promotion of Gabriella Freeman to Director of Customer Care. Gabby brings a depth of experience and knowledge of not only BPU but of customer service. We are working together collaboratively as a team to improve the overall customer experience. Next slide. It's not just a name change, we are transforming the service that we provide our customers. All the leaders in customer care and myself came together to determine the words and definitions for these I-Care values. Integrity, to do the right thing. Customer focus, a commitment to serving our community, which is our customers. Advocacy, doing our job with compassion, support, and accountability. Respect, or the platinum rule, to treat others how they want to be treated. And excellence, to go above and beyond even when it's not easy. We shared these values with every employee in customer care. We asked for their feedback, their suggestions, ideas, and we've empowered them to cope, to go to their supervisor, to go to Gabby or myself with any suggestions, ideas that makes processes easier and how we do business with the customer easier. These will be the guide for decisions going forward with customer care. Next slide. We've expanded our in-lobby appointments with a dedicated person Monday through Friday, 9:15 a.m. to 4:15 p.m. We're collaborating with our communications and marketing team on rewriting our customer correspondence, making it kinder and more clear. We're implementing a new interactive voice response system, which is our automated phone system. This will provide more self-service options, a Spanish IVR, and improve some of those scorecard numbers that you saw. We're empowering our employees. If you take good care of the employee, they're going to take better care of the customer. And then we're partnering with the Unified Government. Gabby and I have already had one collaboration meeting with them. We have another one scheduled and plan to do so on a regular basis. We can help each other and work together. We're serving the same customers, and if we can find efficiencies and streamline processes and work together, that's better for everybody, especially the customer. Next slide. So what's coming next? As I mentioned, we're reviewing processes, trying to find ways to make it easier to do business with us, from starting service to making a payment or a guest payment. We're looking at a customer interaction management tool. So how customers contact us, through phone, through emails, through web inquiries? And this would allow us to ensure a closed-loop process. Right now, that is a manual process primarily done via email. We're working with communications and marketing on creating an easily accessible information regarding LEAP, hardship, and customer care programs, a one-stop shop for the customer, and exploring options for a dedicated resource to connect with agencies and provide support to customers that need that. Implementing a translation service, this would provide custom language services, not only for the customer care team, but across the organization. So for those interactions with the customer, it makes that better. These are just a few of the things that we are already working on for 2025. Bye. We're excited to share all of the new and upcoming ways we are transforming the service we provide our customers. Any questions?
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Wakes.
Mr. Abby, thank you so much for such an excellent presentation, and it sounds very exciting.
Yeah.
My, my question is implementation and the timeline for implementation, particularly of the IVR.
Yes, so we have made a selection of the vendor for the IVR. We're finalizing the details of the contract, and then we'll move forward with that. I would anticipate third or, third or fourth quarter on implementation for the IVR this year.
Thank you.
What other questions? Mr. Haley?
You alluded to, thank you for helping to streamline this. And by the way, let me take a moment, personal privilege, to congratulate and thank Gabby Freeman as a part of your presentation. Continued success in that capacity. LEAP, you talked about LEAP or the change in the LEAP program. I understand there might be some changes therein that are planned. Could you elaborate, or if you're aware of where they might be? I am concerned because they're-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we, we're monitoring that and keeping our pulse on that. As you know, those are federal funds that the state receives, and then that application process goes through there. But it's communicating to our customers. So if we can have a page where customers can go and find out about LEAP and have links to connect them to that, same with our hardship program, and maybe they qualify for both, and any other resources out there that we can direct customers to and just make that accessible for them. But we are, we're monitoring the LEAP situation.
Thank you, Abby. And I have another question.
Absolutely.
Still have to, I was glad to see you had over 300 interactions with the lobby.
Yes.
You know I'm going to ask about-
Yes.
Are there ways that we're still looking that might improve that I still see that there's still people that are coming and not being, they're knocking outside the glass? Is there some way that you might tweak what the policy has been that does not allow the full-time lobby opening, but to have the interactivity available so that more people, without having to go through the appointment? Is that still the process that has to, someone has to call?
I mean, yes, preferably that is. As I mentioned, we have a dedicated person now who, they have an office right there where, so for the in-lobby appointments, if that person is not helping somebody and there is somebody that needs a question or something like that, that the guard, you know, isn't able to answer, that person has answered those questions as needed. We're monitoring every month to, to see how many appointments we are, how busy they are, what types of appointments. Are there things people are coming in for that we need to do better at communicating or providing other options for, because that seems to be the largest? For example, the, the number one reason people are coming in is bringing in the required documentation to start service. So is there a way that we can streamline that process and make it easier? And then readjust and see on the appointment? So we're looking at that. There's a couple other things that we're looking into to be able to provide the flexibility of the service there. But we've gotten a lot of compliments on our dedicated person. She's doing a great job. She also, if, she will call back customers, so if they've left a message to, to make an appointment, she'll call them back, and sometimes she's able to handle whatever question they have over the phone, and they never even need to make an appointment.
Well, it is getting better, and I certainly hope, though, we could monitor some, how many times people tap on the glass and talk to the guard, those interactions, and how quickly that might be resolved, since they can't yet still just walk into the lobby, or there's a way to circle back.
Well, and one thing, and I should have mentioned that in my, my presentation. So we got two new kiosks out there. We, we of course had one damaged, but we have two new ones, and we are working with our IT department. These have upgraded technology with cameras, and it will allow employees in the back office to see what a customer is doing, if they're struggling with the kiosk, they can't get it to work or something is, is not working. So instead of them having to tap on the glass or something, they would be able to reach out to that person, and they can see exactly what steps they have taken in the kiosk and help them complete that transaction. And so hopefully, that will help minimize some of those concerns and questions as well. So we're just, we're working with the software and making sure that's loaded on the computers for the employees in the back office, that it'll be, actually be in the cash office, who would normally handle those payments anyway.
Sounds like a great, great step and a good direction. Thank you for sharing.
I think that that's what I was going to ask you to expand upon, was kind of the virtual teller type of situation, so.
Yeah, and there's other options as far as like, yeah, virtual teller and some other things that we've looked into, and just looking at the need for all of our customers.
Great, thank you.
One of the things they identified early on, as she mentioned, was the bulk of the, the appointments are being made to sign up for service. So do we have something in that process that we can alleviate, you know, for people without having to make a large adjustment? Are we requiring something? Is there an easier step? Is there a different way we can validate and verify a person than, than what we do now that makes it all to where they don't have to jump through those hoops to do that?
Great, thank you.
Mr. Parker, did you have a question?
Yeah, one, just thank you. Very exciting updates, and congratulations, Gabby. Excited to see you step into that role. I was curious, on the, the average speed of answering, is there like an industry standard or a sweet spot we're aiming for? I mean, you know, if I'm the one calling in, I hope it's zero, but as the one paying my utility bill, right? Like, I, I don't want to have so much staff that, right, we have, we're not, you know, we're overstaffed for it. So like, what is that sweet spot in a perfect world?
Yeah, that's a great question, and, and you're exactly right. I mean, we can make that zero and staff a ton of people, but it's, typically, it's between 150 and 180 seconds is, is the ideal place. And so that's why if you look at August, July, and June, our average speed of answer was really good, our handle time, and again, the handle time's one of those, you don't want those phone calls super short. You know, we're not, we're not trying to, we, we want to make sure we provide a full service. And I have told all of customer care, I would rather have a few more seconds or a minute on that phone call longer to ensure a first call resolution, that that customer is able to resolve everything they want versus having a callback. So those numbers were really great. And so looking at the incoming calls, the calls that we handled, the abandonment rate being very low, what made the difference during those months versus other months? And so as, you know, we started out with less reps. Anytime you introduce new technology that the customers are using, that tends to drive up calls. They just got questions or anything about that. And so just trying to find what did we do during those, those three months that really kept us in that sweet spot? And how can we recreate it most of the time?
That's great, thank you.
Yeah. Abby, on the flex, flex pay-
Yes.
Numbers?
Yes.
Is that an increase, the 24 numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
A, a small increase. There wasn't a significant change in that, but that's something that we do want to, to promote more. There's a lot of customers that don't know about or don't understand what that is. And so along with that resource page with LEAP and hardship, this is something that if, you know, prepay, if they understand, hey, you know, you can pay your bill when it's convenient for you, you don't get that surprise bill, you have a lot more control over that electric portion of your bill. And it's just educating them the option of that, and the fact that they can test it out, and, and if they love it, great, and if they don't, they can always switch back.
Right, I'm always surprised those numbers aren't a little bit higher.
Yeah, and, and the vendor that we use for that, because they're custom app and stuff like that, we've met with them on talking about how we can do more promotion with that. Okay, thanks. Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Abby. That was the only presentation we had tonight. My miscellaneous comments will be brief, is, you know, the ops teams, both electric and water, really busy with, with the weather that, that blew in last night. You don't, don't often think that that type of thing affects our water service, but it, it really does too with the rapid change in temperatures and cars sliding into things and whatever. But so those, both of those groups, electric ops and water ops, have been, been working really long hours in some really tough conditions over the past 24 hours or so. We, we did have some disruptions, and, and that's just kind of the nature of the utility business when we have weather events. But one thing I wanted to point out in particular in talking with, with Darren McNew a little bit before the meeting was that wind blew as good as it blows most of the time, right? And we only had five tree tickets turned in. So that is a huge testament to the commitment that that team has made and that you all have made into providing the funding for our vegetation management program. That's, I, I, I had to ask him twice, did you just say five? Because that is, in, in, before we started with, with the program the way it is today, it, it would have been 505. So we appreciate the support, and I sure appreciate all the work that, that the electric and water folks are doing during these times that, that the customers need us.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that update. So at this point, public comments on the agenda items that we heard. We really just had a customer care update, but if there's anyone from the public to speak to the customer care update? No one? Sign up? Anyone online, sir? All right, well, thank you. Well, we move, we move right along then to our board comments for the evening. We'll start with Vice President of the Board Mulvaney Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Abby, thank you for the presentation. Couldn't find you there for a second. Thank you for the presentation. Really informative. I know that you, you've been with us for, you know, relatively speaking to people who have 40-year careers here, you've been with us for a short time, but your impact is, is felt, it's seen, it's heard. And I know that, that the folks on your team, Gabby, you know, I know your folks on your team, everybody's trying to improve every day. And there's no doubt in my mind, under your, the leadership of you ladies, that, that we'll get there. So thank you very much for everything you guys have done to date. And, Mr. President, I just have one additional comment. Well, that's not true, I've got two. But one, and Jeremy, you touched on it. Obviously, you know, our teams that are working around the clock during a storm like this cannot thank the teams enough for all that they do. It is, it's not easy work. It's, it's, it's dangerous, it's exhausting, it's all the things. And for some reason, you know, these folks just continue showing up every day and every night and, and pulling their shifts. And, you know, as a resident in this community, I sincerely appreciate the efforts that the BPU team goes through at times like this, you know, including all of the operations folks, you know, that are sitting behind a computer, to, to all those that are out on the poles and, and, you know, in, in looking at water mains and stuff. So thank you to the teams for that. And then the last comment I had was, I just wanted to apologize to the board, my fellow board members, for establishing the work session at 4:30 p.m. without prior discussion with other board members. I know that, that several of us have day jobs, and I know that that doesn't work out for everybody. So we hopefully fix that by moving it back to the, the start time of 5 o'clock, but- But, um, the thought process behind it was is we, um, are always having to hurry over here for a six o'clock meeting and which we did again tonight, but, um, but thank you for, um, for everyone being there tonight. It was an important discussion we had, but apologies to the rest of the board, particularly those that have day jobs for establishing that at four thirty. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez.
Um, I'd also like to, um, welcome Gabby into that position and thank you, um, Abby for your presentation. Um, thanks to all of our staff who was out in the wind and the cold last night, taking care of everybody else's needs. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
I can say it any better than the, the first two board members have. Appreciate the presentations tonight. Congratulations, Gabby. And, uh, really can't say enough about the teams out doing work in literally blizzard conditions. We're, we're lucky to have those folks working on our behalf.
Indeed. Thank you. Mr. Wakes.
Thank you. Uh, again, thank you, Abby and Gabby. Uh, excellent presentation and thank you for your, your work. And also like to express my gratitude, especially to the, the teams that are out working in the, in the cold and, and the s- snow blizzard that we had overnight, uh, uh, getting out, out of my house, uh, this morning. Uh, and then thinking about those, uh, who are out working overnight, uh, you know, I, uh, my heart goes out to you guys and really thank you so much for, for your hard work. Thank you, Darren. And thank you for mentioning to Jeremy. And, uh, Rose, uh, thank you for your concern, uh, and I know your intention was well-meaning. Uh, and, uh, so we appreciate your hard work and being such a great, uh, team member and trying to bring us together for the work session. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Ronaman.
I think everybody said it, but I'll say it one more time because it can't be said enough, uh, to thank our, our workers, uh, water, electric workers that are out there and all can, all these, uh, these conditions, uh, to keep our, our electric, uh, water, electricity on and water flowing. And also want to thank Gabby, or thank her, I want, thank you, Gabby, for all you do and congratulations, you, you've earned that position. And, uh, thank Abby for the presentation. I look forward to, uh, those numbers going down or going up as appropriate. So thank you and look forward to, to, uh, future reports.
Thank you. Certainly I want to thank Abby again. I guess this sounds a little repetitive at the end, but seriously, thank you for your review. I have an ongoing concern and feel a little more optimistic hearing your, about customer service and what we do. And certainly now at the helm, uh, to see Gabby Freeman in that capacity. Welcome again. Congratulations. Looking forward to the team doing what you will to further enhance our customer service. Great presentation. Um, also to say that I was particularly pleased that we came through this season, um, this sudden blizzard with, um, well, a minimal amount and we got everybody restored. Do want to continue to express concern about our older parts of our community, um, did here specifically from one area, uh, the West High area on today and hopefully that, not to single anyone out, but heard from a couple and looking at our aging infrastructure in some parts and the maintenance therein and some of the older parts, I hope we'll continue to look at. But glad we came through the season. Just, um, appreciate the meeting. I think it went, um, extremely well and we're looking forward to further streamlining and, uh, getting greater efficiencies in some of our, our meetings and our policies as we move forward. Further comment? Any further comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Wait a second.
Moved and seconded, uh, to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ronaman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.